I'm going to call the meeting of the September meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order. The board members that will be hearing the cases tonight, members Steve Leanes, member Monique Greenberry, Fire Chief Brian Nadelli, member James Sweeney, and myself, the Chair Kenneth Galligan. Our zoning enforcement officer this evening is Mr. James Plouffe. Our recording secretary is Monique Fagazzo and her able assistant, Willie Godiva. Before we start this evening's hearings, I would ask anybody who has a cellphone or electronic device if you can just shut it off or put it on silence so it doesn't affect the meeting, and also if you need to use this phone, please step outside. If there is conversation out in the back or in the corridor, I'd appreciate if somebody would just close the door if that becomes a problem. All right, the way the meeting will go tonight, also I should tell you that this meeting is being televised, Brockton Cable Television. It will be repeated from time to time. Before we get started tonight, do we have any withdrawals that can be granted without prejudice prior to the start of the meeting? I have been notified of one withdrawal, and I will read the case. If you are here for this case, the case has been withdrawn and it will not be heard tonight. And that is petition number 2554, the petition of Joao Montero, 15 Dana Place, Brockton, Mass. for a variance, seeking relief from Section 27-9 to construct a two-family dwelling and seeking relief from lot size, frontage, side, and rear setbacks in an R3 zone located at 14 Dana Place. The case has been withdrawn and it will not be heard this evening. The second case that we have been notified on is petition number 2551, the petition of Stephon Gillings, 14 Electric Avenue, Brockton, Mass. for a variance, seeking relief from Section 27-9 to convert the existing garage into living space. The rear of the garage does not meet the setbacks of an I-1C zone located at 14 Electric Avenue. So if you're here for that case tonight, that case will not be heard. So are there any other withdrawals prior to the start of the meeting? If not, we have four cases before us tonight. The format of the meeting is I will call the case, I will read the petition, the representative who is going to speak on the petition will come up to the podium and present the case to the board. When the petitioner has finished presenting the case, I'll ask the board members if we have any questions relative to the testimony that has just been given. When that has been completed, I'll close out that portion of the hearing and I'll ask if there's anyone here that wants to speak in favor. After that, I'll ask if there's anyone here that wants to speak in opposition. After that, I'll ask if there's any elected official in the room that wants to be heard on the issue. And lastly, I'll ask if there's anyone here that has any question at all relative to the testimony that has been given. At that point, I will close the public portion of the meeting, and I will then open it up to deliberation among the five board members. This is the portion of the meeting where you will hear the board members discussing the information that was presented relative to the zoning requirements in the city. At some point, you'll hear a board member make a motion to grant. If that petition is seconded, I will ask the clerk to call the roll. This is when the clerk will petition every member who then will vote either yes in the affirmative or no in the negative. In order for a petition to pass, if all five members vote in the affirmative, the petition will be granted. If the vote is four in the affirmative, one in the negative, it will be granted. Anything less than that will be denied. After I have been notified by the clerk what the vote is, I will then announce what the vote is and whether the petition has been granted or denied. All right. Board members, did I leave anything out? We good? The first case to be heard tonight is number 25-50, the petition of Stephen Mendez, 183 Spark Street, Brockton, Mass. for a variance, seeking relief from Section 27-20 to relocate the shed to the rear of the property to meet the setback in an I-2 zone located at 183 Spark Street. Please come forward and identify yourself to the clerk.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Mendez. I own 183 Spark Street.
Before you get started, Mr. Mendez, just hold up for one second. You're asking for a variance. I think the best thing for the board on this one is to determine or grant a finding because it's not going to be any more detrimental than what's there right now. It's just relocating a shed. So when he gets through, just keep in mind that he does not have to demonstrate a hardship on this one. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I was seeking relief from the ordinance 27-20 pertaining to the shed on my property. On the site plan, it shows that it's a corner lot with an odd triangular shape, and this shed isn't meeting the five-foot setback on the rear. I wanted to relocate it, remove that shed and relocate it to where it says on this site plan to be relocated, giving five feet all around from the side in the rear to meet these setback requirements. Essentially, I hired a surveyor and I discovered that where the shed is now is actually in the street, Sylvan Street. So the previous owner had a retaining wall put up on the Sylvan Street side, and I didn't know this until I did this survey. So, you know, with speaking to attorneys and contractors and whatnot, they said the best thing to do is attempt to relocate it. Thank you.
Are you looking to do other work down the road? Is that why you had it surveyed to begin with, just out of curiosity?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Are you looking to do other work on the property as, no, you just happened to have it surveyed?
Yeah, I just did the survey for the permit, just created, did a plot plan for the permit for this shed.
For this shed?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's how I discovered it.
All right, thank you.
So the way I understand this is this shed will be no closer than five feet to Cedar Street and five feet to Sylvan Street.
Yes.
Shed is 100% on your property?
It will be, yes.
This plan apparently shows part of this shed being on Cedar Street.
On Sylvan.
Yeah, I got a slash mark here that...
That's cutting right through. That is the retaining wall that the previous owner of this home put about 20 years ago. I had no idea about that.
All right, and it says garage to be removed.
That's going...
That's the one that's coming down?
Yes.
So that's removed. The shed, is it there now?
It's there now.
Okay, and where it's located, you're telling us it's no closer than five feet, so you're asking for permission to leave that shed five feet from the street?
No, I want to remove that shed entirely and relocate it to where it says relocate shed, to the rear of the home. If you see, there's another box there with...
Line place, the line spot?
Yes.
The inner one, close to the house chief?
The 14...
It says proposed shed 14 by 20. That will be the finished shed?
Yes.
All the other things will be gone?
Yes, they will.
Okay. And this was all discovered when you did a survey?
Yes.
Okay. Board members, any questions? Everybody's good? I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there any elected official in the room that wants to be heard on the issue? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone in the room that has a question relative to the testimony that has been given? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. That concludes the public discussion on the issue. I will now open it up for discussion among board members.
I think he's doing the proper thing to clear the right of way, so I don't have any issue with that. It seems like he's doing the right thing.
It's not often we see a resident looking, just goes to do one thing, finds there's a problem, he wants to fix it on his own. So I applaud Mr. Mendez, first of all, for doing this. I'd make a motion to grant.
Second.
All right, on the motion, I think we should just stipulate that that garage that is shown on Sylvan Street will be removed.
Got it.
And the only building that will be left is this shed that will be 100% on your property.
Yes, that's correct.
All right, a motion's been made and seconded. With those stipulations, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Mendez?
Yes.
Chief Nadelli?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Ms. Greenberry?
Yes.
Chair Galligan?
Yes.
Chair, there's five in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
Well, is five in the affirmative, none in the negative, the petition is granted.
Thank you. Good luck.
All right, petition 2551 on Electric Avenue has been postponed till the October meeting. The next petition is 2552, the petition of Alessandro Gomes, 11 Canton Street, Brockton, Mass. for a variance and special permit, seeking relief from Section 27-5, 27-9, Table 1, to convert a single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling on a 6,000-square-foot lot in an R3 zone located 11 Canton Street.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is John Fink. I'm an attorney at Sims &amp; Sims here in Brockton. I am here with Alessandro Gomes. Mr. Gomes is seeking a variance on lot size primarily in order to turn this into a two-family. He's resided at the property since 2024, which he had purchased under his parents' name. He refinanced in 2020. So he's looking to convert his own home into a two-family home. He intends to reside in the bottom portion while renting out the top. In essence, the neighborhood is entirely multifamilies. There are two to three on the entire street, including the Ames Street backing up into Canton Street, that are single families. It's an R3 zone, and the lot itself is reasonably small. It's right up against that. He is proposing to expand slightly. You'll see that he's adding a bedroom there on the first and second floor, but that's towards the side where he has ample offset. In other words, he won't be in violation there. The only nonconformity he's really expanding here is going to be the lot size itself. The table would require 1,200 square feet, whereas he only has 6,600 square feet.
Did I hear you say that this is currently a two-family?
No, this is currently a one-family. He resides in it. He's attempting to convert it to a two-family.
Can you tell us what the story is on the projected stairway on the building?
The projected stairway on the building, the idea there is we require a special permit. It does go out the back. In order to really accommodate it being a two-family, it's a 1,200 square-ish foot on each floor. It really requires the stair to be in the back. In particular, the first floor is very small with the proposed addition of the bedroom right there where the stairs are existing. And if you go up the stairs currently, you end up right in the bathroom. It wouldn't be a good layout. It would take up a lot of room. So his proposal is to put the stairs on the back.
What are the, I see the parking space in the front is about 162 square feet. What is the, what are the size, do we know what the size of those parking spaces, those three in the back with a garage that is existing now that you say will be taken down? How big those parking spaces are?
Are you removing the parking spaces or adding the parking spaces?
No, adding.
Adding them, you're taking them on the garage, right?
You're right, it does say existing.
It's a car garage.
Yeah. So you're taking down the garage, adding the parking spaces. I guess my question is how big those parking spaces are, is what I'm looking for.
Plan shows nine by 18.
On the front one, but does it say that on the...
How big is your garage?
In all that area that still says driveway now, that plans to stay, there doesn't, there's no expectation for green space in that area at all?
There is green space over there, in the back and on the side.
If anybody's going to speak, please stand up and speak into the microphone.
Into the microphone relative to the plan.
So there is green space on the left side of the garage, and then also will be more green space behind the garage.
I should point out that Mr. Gomes is a licensed builder and home improvement contractor, so he has some knowledge relative to how these plans will be implemented.
So it looks like what you're going to be left with is a little bit of a driveway on the perimeter of the property to get to the rear. Is that...
Where are you putting the green?
There's green space here already, and then there's more beyond the garage.
Are you going to add any?
So how are we getting to the back spots, is my question? How are we getting to the parking in the rear? So we're building towards the side, and is there trees? You're going to be removing trees?
There's a tree there on the corner that's going to be removed. And we have like about 16, 15 feet that we can get access to the back.
So are you going to be paving up to your property line?
Yes, it's already paved to the property line.
Through the trees?
Yeah.
No, there's a tree. You're removing the tree. You're paving over the tree.
I mean, there's just a circle with the trees that's not paved, but like eventually that's going to be paved.
So you mean it's here on the plan, if you see the bump up, that portion will be paved. It's small. You'll see the green space percentage change is relatively small on the plans.
The green space is relatively small.
The green space change is what I was saying was small. It's actually going to be 23.9% down from 30, I believe, is what it says here.
Yeah, it looks like the whole front and side of the house is going to be blacktop. Is what it looks like to me.
I believe it mostly is, is what he's saying.
No.
No?
No, it's not. Whatever that's there now that we have a parking space, that's already paved. And then we got green space on the right.
This area is paved.
Whatever you see, no sewer recards, that's all green.
So if I'm standing in front of the house to the left, is this one?
Yeah, that's all green space.
I think that's confusion.
Yeah, but I guess that's my point. If you look, and I don't want to debate it, it actually says it on the plan, everything to where your proposed addition is, that's all blacktop on that side of the street, on that side of the house.
Whatever that says parking space, that's already parking there. And then on the side, existing driveway, there's parking also there.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying is that whole side of the house appears now and in the future will all be blacktop.
Yes.
The only green space that it appears you will have is going to be on that left side where that sewer easement is. Okay, I just, that's all I want to be clear about. It just doesn't, that's very little green space for what you have going in here, that's why. Okay, thank you.
On the driveway side where it says proposed addition, it looks like there's a set of stairs that are shaped like an L. Is that an exterior stairway also?
Yes.
So there's two exterior stairways, one there and one in the backyard?
Yes, correct.
One in the front and one in the back, is what you're saying?
Yes, one in the front and one in the back.
One on the driveway side, and that stairway services the new second-floor addition?
Yes.
And the one in the back also services the new...
Yes.
...of the expansion.
Second floor.
Maybe I missed this, but could you just recite the hardship, please?
Sure, this is a single-family home in an area that's an R3 zone. In essence, it's dominated by multifamilies. There are only three single families...
You speak into the microphone a little closer.
There are only three single families in the whole area, counting the Ames Street that abuts back onto Canton Street. The lot doesn't allow for another use, if you look at it. It is slightly smaller. It is right up against, to the left when you look at the property, that's a three-family home right there that it abuts immediately. One to the direct south towards Ames Street, that is a single-family home, but it's one of very few. So in essence, the hardship here is that as the existing building is, it's not a desirable location for a single-family home. Now, he does live there, and he has been living there for over a decade now, and he does own it, and he's looking to improve it and to rent his own home out to a tenant while he continues to reside there.
So he has 6,600 square feet?
Correct.
And the R3 is 12,000?
It's, I believe, 5,000, no, 7,000 plus 5,000, yes.
6,600 square feet?
Correct.
Correct, yeah, okay. All right, any other questions from the board members? Everybody's good? Okay, I'll close that portion of the hearing. I will now open it up for public discussion. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there any elected official in the room that wants to be heard on the issue? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone that has a question relative to the testimony that has been given? Seeing none, I will close that. That will then close the public discussion on the issue. I will now open it up for board members for deliberation. So he's looking for a variance and special permit for two stairways. And it's currently a single-family, and he wants to convert it to a two. I find it difficult for a hardship here, to be honest with you.
I would agree, chief. I don't think the hardship pertains to the size, shape, topography.
The parking spaces that are shown are smaller than is required. He did not ask for relief for size of the parking spaces. There's going to be a substantial amount of blacktop on this property. It's a very congested location right now.
Make a motion to grant.
Motion has been made and seconded to grant. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Leanes?
No.
Chief Nadelli?
No.
Mr. Sweeney?
No.
Ms. Greenberry?
No.
Chair Galligan?
No.
Mr. Chair, that's zero in the affirmative, five in the negative.
Well, is none in the affirmative, five in the negative, the petition as presented is denied. The next petition, 2553, the petition of E&amp;A Real Estate Investments LLC, 244 Liberty Street, Unit A, Brockton, Mass. for a variance and special permit, seeking relief from Section 27-24-5 and Section 27-25 to allow the renovation of an existing substandard nonconforming structure in a two-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling with parking in an I-1C zone located at 412 Center Street.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, with your permission, my name is Jim Burke, and attorney-at-law with offices at 48 North Pearl Street, Brockton, Massachusetts. And I represent E&amp;A Real Estate Investments LLC. Principals are here. By history, we appeared before the Zoning Board of Appeals previously on another petition in which among, I think the moving factor of a denial that we received was that the plans as presented didn't seem to be consistent with the request that was before the Zoning Board of Appeals. We've been to the planning board and received permission to return to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I believe we have a considerably sound, better established, and a very usable plan. By history, this structure was built in 1914. It has been used as a two-family dwelling for decades. The assessor's office lists it as an existing two-family. The principals who purchased the property recently with the intent to renovate them for housing basically have been unable to establish the date of the conversion to a two-family as it relates to the year 1967, which would make it a pre-existing nonconforming use. The net effect is we are required to come before the board to seek a variance under the ordinance to allow a two-family structure in the I-1C zone. We also have a request before you of a special permit related to the utilization of exterior stairs that, I'll let Scott get into more fully, but it relates to the fact that there's insufficient area to properly do the renovations and have the egress, ingress and egress as required. The property is in fact a pre-existing nonconforming structure. We, at this stage, unlike the prior petition, are going to stay entirely within the same footprint of the building. There will be in fact nine parking spots for the two-family utilization. It is in an area, as the board is familiar, near East Junior High, that is essentially almost all multifamilies, even though it's in an I-1C zone. It's the nature of the development of the area, and in fact, the granting of the variance would be consistent, as I said, with its long-time utilization. The structure itself is in a dilapidated condition. Based on the assessor's review, they list it as poor. That in of itself is a sufficient basis of a hardship under 48. When you have a small, substandard lot and you have a dilapidated structure, that in of itself relates to a hardship because the economics involved in bringing up to both code and usable, reusable sale are so great that it makes it economically unviable to go forward as a single-family structure, wherein it's appropriate for the request for the utilization of a two-family that we have before the Zoning Board of Appeals before today. The plans that are before you, I think, are very thorough. Roughly 900 to 1,000 feet in the first floor. The second floor is the same because the footprint hasn't changed. There is an attic that will be utilized, which brings the total renovation to roughly about 2,200 square feet by my calculation. There will be three bedrooms on each unit, and there will be no changes that relates to the side setback that's nonconforming, the front setback that's nonconforming. As I said, it will stay within the exact same footprint of the structure right now. I think that the board has the ability, and I think would benefit the community by assisting and allowing the continuation of affordable housing with an attractive renovated structure, as you can see from the plans. And I'll pass it over to Scott so we can do an outline, and then I'll talk briefly.
Thank you, Attorney Burke. Just real quickly on the special permit, the reason for the special permit request in trying to keep this renovation within the existing footprint, there just isn't room for an interior stair to go from the second floor down to the ground. So it's an outdoor stairway to get from the second floor to the ground. There is an interior stairway for the second floor, so this would be the second means of egress for that second unit would be on the outdoor stairway. Really, the only other thing to add on to Attorney Burke's comment, I think at the planning board, we had either seven or eight bedrooms proposed, and we kind of discussed that it might be a little bit strong. It was still within that same footprint, but the applicants agreed to shrink it down to the three bedrooms. to the three-bedroom reach unit. So while the footprint didn't change, we have less units than we had previously. And the only other thing to add is we've got a couple of trees that we're proposing in the front. So that's really all I have on the proposal.
So in conclusion, I think that the board can grant because there are circumstances related to the small nature of a 19th-century lot in a 19th-century development that contains a substantially dilapidated structure, which makes renovation based on the economics unviable, and that there is a hardship that's created to the owner, and the literal enforcement of the grant would not impact the surrounding neighborhood in any degree. In fact, it would increase both the value of this structure, the taxable value of this structure, and the impact properly and favorably increasing the value of surrounding structures. So I think this is a good decision that hopefully the board will agree with me in granting the requested for relief, and as consistently as I've said, legalize the two-family that's been there for many decades. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have, or try to.
Sure. Mr. Chair, if I may, did we rearrange a little parking on this at the planning board stage? Or not?
I don't think we did.
No? Okay.
No, I don't think so. I think we've had the same nine spaces.
All right. I was just making it up then. All right.
They all kind of go together, at least in my episode, but this one I don't think.
Okay, thank you.
Looks like you guys are going to have young trees out on the front of that. Would the owner be opposed to putting like a post and rail fence across the front as well to beautify it?
It would be good with that in between the trees, chief.
What was, I'm sorry, chief, what was the request?
Post and rail fence.
Okay.
Across the front.
So you're telling us that for years this has been used as a two-family that is currently vacant?
That's certainly my understanding, and that seems to be consistent with the assessor's records. And they are not binding, certainly, but they tell the history that I think we're trying to repeat. That it has been, when it got converted, we don't know. We can't identify with clarity that it was prior to 1967, and that leads us here.
It's in an area that is surrounded by multis. There's no question about this. Both singles and multis there. You are saying tonight that there will be three bedrooms per unit.
Yes.
What happens to the top floor?
I believe there's one bedroom and a family room up on the top floor, on the third floor.
So it's the third bedroom and then a family room.
So there'd be two bedrooms on floor two and one up on floor three? So just to go back on that, you're telling us that this will be no larger than a three-bedroom on each unit?
That's correct.
And the top-floor unit would have probably two bedrooms on floor two and one on floor three?
That's exactly it, correct.
Okay, so the relief that you're asking for tonight is to allow a two-family in a single-family residential area?
Yes, it is.
There can be no further expansion of this building if we grant you a variance to use this as a two-family?
Yes, that's their understanding. In fact, the revised plans bring it back down to the footprint, and it's their understanding.
So if this is successful, we would grant you a variance to use it as a two-family, but it's still sitting in a single-family residential zone?
Correct.
Do you understand that? Okay. And the relief you're asking for on the stairway is stairway on the driveway side, which would be the west side of the building?
Yes.
And the porch that we see on the front, there is no stairway going from floor two down to the ground. That's an interior stairway. Okay, and this has been through planning already?
Yes.
Approved by planning. Board members, any other questions?
I just have a question about the stairwell. In one photo, the stairwell is jutting away from the property, and then in another photo, it runs alongside the property. I'm just trying to figure out which one is the correct depiction of the stairwell.
There are definitely some varying views of this.
The floor plan, the plans that show the house, kind of a tan color house, that's the existing elevations. So then if you flip to the page before that with the gray house, that's the proposed renovation.
Okay, so you already removed that stairwell?
Exactly.
Oh, okay, because I'm like, I didn't see it.
Yep, yep, nope, that's, yeah, that's exactly it. So the tan plan is existing, the gray is proposed.
Okay, thank you.
So is it, I guess my question is, is it, because I couldn't see around, is it three in the back, two in the front? Two stories?
It's three all the way up.
But on the yellow house, it doesn't show that, and it doesn't look that way when you drive by.
There's the little, you're right, it's three in the front, three in the back, and then you have that little bump out in the back, the two-story bump out in the back.
Okay. But the tan photos make it look like a three-story wood frame house. The way I see it is a one and a half?
Yep.
When I drive by there. When I look at these plans, I see it now as a two-and-a-half-story wood frame.
Proposed, correct.
So they're not really staying within the envelope? They're actually adding another whole floor?
Well, we're staying within the building envelope.
Yes.
The footprint envelope. But going up, exactly. So there's definitely, as Attorney Burke said, there's definitely more square footage because we're adding that third floor.
And that third floor, help me understand the plans correctly, Scott, I'm sorry.
Sure.
What is residing on that third floor?
It'll be a family room and a bedroom.
Simply, that's it?
That's it. And it's...
No plumbing, no gas?
No living, no kitchen, nothing like that, just the family room and the bedroom. And it's a little bit smaller square footage-wise just because of the pitch of the roof, so you don't have the full footprint, so it shortens up a little bit. So it is, it's just a family room and the master bedroom. It's similar to the, really, all the two-families that you're seeing now with that third, that attic, that attic space for the second-story unit getting it.
And I get it, we've just gotten burned on these.
Sure.
Bad.
Understood. I think the important thing on those is there is no kitchen, no, you know, nothing like that up on that third floor that would lead you to think that it could be a third unit.
And I'll go back to, like I've said in the past, they're not putting it in there. When they sell that property in 10 years, there is the potential that gets put in there, and we'll have to hold in the bag on that. That's my concern.
Understood.
I'm not worried about these gentlemen, I'm worried about the next one. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
So one of the concerns there is if that top floor is going to be used as a bedroom and a den or whatever, that has to be used by whoever lives on floor number two. Consequently, you only need one means of egress and ingress from floor two to the top floor. You don't need a second means of egress.
That's correct.
So I think in deference to what the chief is saying, what we are concerned about is that down the road, that top floor doesn't turn into a three-family. So if this is granted, we'll be very specific that it shall be not more than two families with no living, full living space on the top floor.
Understood.
Yeah.
Yes.
And you reduce the number of bedrooms to six? Any other questions?
What was the square footage of the third floor?
I think it was 570 or something akin to that. 971 on one and two, and then I think 500 something on the...
569 on the third floor.
I was close.
Five something.
On the west side of the building will be the driveway. All the parking will be in the rear.
Correct.
And the east side of the building will remain as it is, as green space.
That is correct.
And I think I heard you say that you're going to protect the green space in the front by putting some kind of a fence along the front?
Two trees and a split rail fence.
Is that what the board was talking about?
Yes.
So basically, you have reached a point where we're saying it'll be recorded as a two-family. Renovations will be 2,200 square feet. Front porch will have no stairs, maximum three bedrooms in each unit, post and rail fence out front, and no full living space on floor number three. I think that's what we've come down to.
Yes, sir.
All right, board members, we all set?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I will ask now, is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there any elected official in the room that wants to be heard on the issue? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone that has a question relative to the testimony that has been given? Seeing none, I will now close the public discussion portion of the hearing and open it up for discussion among the board members. Board members?
Well, something has to be done over there, we can't leave it a dilapidated mess. When it came through planning, we shrunk it down a little bit. I understand the concerns of, you know, the expansion, however, I think we framed it up as best we can, so I'd be in favor for it.
And it is conformant with the other houses to the left and to the right of it, and it is a much bigger lot. You can handle the parking a lot better than the other houses, so I'm in favor for it too.
I didn't hear anybody ask any questions about the backyard as far as drainage, but I think that may have been covered in planning?
It is. Well, it's in the plan too, I think, if I'm not, on the plot plan, it shows some drainage on the back of the lot.
I think there's a low spot out in the back there.
Mm-hmm.
But if that's been addressed with planning, I'm good with that. Are you confident it has?
Yep.
Motion to grant.
Second.
Okay, a motion is made, and seconded to grant with the stipulations as I mentioned. You all good with the stipulations?
Yes.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Delanas?
Yes.
Chief Nadile?
No.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Ms. Greenberry?
Yes.
Chair Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, that's four in the affirmative, one in the negative.
Vote is four in the affirmative, one in the negative. The petition is granted. Good luck.
Thank the board.
The next petition is 2555, the petition of DeAngelo's Incorporated, Post Office Box 519, Bridgewater, Mass., for a special permit seeking relief from Section 2736-6A and 273 to allow the construction of a new Chapoteau with a drive-through lane and window within the flood zone in a C2 zone located at 651 Belmont Street. Before we get started, this has already come before us and was approved for the intended purpose where the drive-through. There has been a question that has come up about a portion of this property being in the flood plain. Before it goes to conservation, the zoning board has to make a determination whether or not we will grant them a special permit to allow them to be within the flood plain. So tonight's hearing is strictly based upon a portion of this lot that is supposedly in a flood plain zone, and they will explain that to us. Good evening. Please identify yourself.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name's Attorney Michael Spillane with Marione, Shaughnessy &amp; Udi. Scott Ferrier for J.K. Homegren is with me this evening. As the chair had indicated, as you'll see on the plan, the proposed construction is within the FEMA flood plain. Historically, for those who are unfamiliar with the area, it was the West Meadow Brook, which ran from the West Gate Mall southerly through the property and fed into a pond, which has since been filled in, and the Brockton High School was constructed on that filled-in, excuse me, pond. Our understanding is that in 1984, there was a letter of map amendment that had been filed with FEMA. Neither the applicant nor the planning department have been able to locate the letter of map change, but there was a 2012 flood insurance rate map letter issued by FEMA, which placed this property in a Zone X. In order for us to, we have two options in order to proceed with the construction, one being we can go to FEMA and have them, you know, do what they were intending to do, which is actually remove this property from the flood plain. That could take a month, that could take a year, could take longer than that. So under the zoning bylaws, we've elected to come and seek a special permit to allow for this construction within what historically was a flood plain, but obviously since has been, you know, all of the water has been channeled underground. I will note, too, that the existing Shaw's Building, the new building that was constructed 25 years ago, is partially within the same flood zone. Not sure whether or not there was a special permit granted for the construction. That building's been around for about 25 years, but it's in the same situation as we're in now. That building was also constructed by our client who's proposing this construction. I don't think there's really anything else to advise, you know, happy to field any questions, you know, as to the existence of the flood plain, and Scott's got a... You can see the blue areas is what runs through the property and is where the channel had historically been and has since been diverted underground.
Well, I'll start off by saying when I was a kid, I used to live up there. I used to play in this area, and I remember when those stores were built, they actually put that stream that comes from the golf course through a large pipe under Belmont Street into an opening that goes into the high school.
Correct.
In all the years that I have been around that area, I have never seen that area flood at all. So technically, it may be in a flood zone, but it is not open water, it's not an open river, it's a culverted stream that goes under there. So the way I see this is that there is only a very small corner of your property that touches this, and the reason you're here tonight is before you can get to conservation, you're going to get through us.
That's correct. That's correct. I mean, as I indicated, we could go through FEMA and try and get it taken out of the flood plain district, but quite honestly, that is a lengthy, at best, process.
And you were here before with this plan, and we granted the plan, so...
Correct.
You're good to go as far as putting the building up. It's only this glitch with the corner of your property in what's called the flood plain?
Correct. Actually, the uses where we're, what we're proposing to use the property for is allowed by right. It was really just the drive-through that we needed the special permit for, so...
Didn't you recently get permission to relocate another city sewer line or something up there?
Yes, yes, that was part of the decision, or part of the development plan. There's a sewer easement that runs, Scott would know more specifically as to exactly where it was, but there is an agreement with the city that we will be relocating that as part of the development.
So that's all been taken care of?
Correct, correct.
All right, board members, any questions?
Yeah, is that a contributory to the old lake that was there where the high school existed?
Flags Pond.
Flags Pond, yeah.
Yeah, it is, as the chief said, I think it comes all the way from Thorny Lee and headed that way back in the day. I think in the 60s, again, as the chief said, it was all piped underground in discharges now still at the small part of the pond that's left at the high school. So it was all taken care of in the 60s.
Yeah, I was just curious. The high school's there now too, so...
Well, don't realize now, this is on the other side of Belmont Street, this is the north side of Belmont Street, and honestly, my recollection up there is that whole area is all gravel.
Yep.
It is what it is, yeah. Board members, any other questions? Okay, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there any elected official in the room that wants to be... Is there any elected official in the room that wants to be heard on the issue? Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board members. I'm Phil Griffin. I'm the ward three city counselor. This development will be in my ward. I don't see any problem with it, the way it was explained by the engineer and the attorney. I've lived in that area personally for over 30 years, and as the chief stated, I've never seen that area flood at all. I think it's just an antiquated law that regulation never got taken care of. I'd rather go in front of you and try to get it resolved tonight than have to deal with FEMA, so I encourage you to rule favorably on this tonight. Thank you very much, board members. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other elected official wants to be heard on the issue? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone in the room that has a question relative to the testimony that has been given? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. That concludes the public discussion relative to the issue. Now I will open it up for discussion among the board members. Board members?
I just, it's a very dry area. I mean, I reside up there now with headquarters, and it's, I never see any issues.
You of all people, you're right there.
Right on top of it.
Yeah. So the issue before us tonight is to make a determination that the zoning board would have no reservations about them moving forward, and if we grant it, then they have to go to conservation and get through the conservation. Correct? Yeah. So-
I'll make a motion to grant.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to grant. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Delanas?
Yes.
Chief Nadelli?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Ms. Greenberry?
Yes.
Chair Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, there's five in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
Vote is five in the affirmative, none in the negative. The petition, the special permit, has been granted.
Very much. Thank you. Have a good night.
That concludes our agenda for this evening. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.